I am going to call us to order at 5:30. Reception of guests. And changes, updates, agenda revisions?
There may be an addition, I'm gonna wait for Bill to come. I think there's an addition. At least to the discussion.
Okay. Publicomics and correspondence. I know that Jack is here to republie the use of rec board 3.2 versus athletic director. So if there's no objection, I would suggest that we move that.
Mm-hmm.
Ahead. So, this was... Honestly, I don't remember who requested this.
Yeah, you asked.
Okay, go.
I thought we needed to discuss because of something I had heard about the other schools and it's different across. And perhaps we need to discuss.
Alright. I have no information about this item, so.
Wendy, you're out.
Yeah.
That's why Jack came too.
Well, I wanted to know what the discussion was, because it wasn't clear, but I had a sense.
What came to my attention was the other elementaries are using an athletic director model, which we used to here years ago. And we're using the rec board or rec person versus a school person. And I was wanting more information about why, and I knew there had been maybe smoother work going on using the athletic director in a school or not, so.
I can speak to just the history of my nine years. It's always been the rec board since I've been here. It could have, could have been.
It wasn't before, it was Steve Towne.
Yeah, so in my time, it's been the rec board. So I can't speak to before that or how long ago that was, but we have had it that way, at least the last nine years.
And also the town voted two years ago, right? So that we can operate with Callis, how you guys operate. I have that wrong.
I don't think they were letting vote.
With Callis?
Yeah, there was a change in the, in the rec field. So you were not just attached to East Montpelier, that you could have Callis kids and.
Well, as a rec program, we do, if we have space, certainly welcome students from other programs who may not have a program or may be in a situation, different situation. So we've, we do that, I think that's, so I, just to, I'm Jack's ally. I think you're absolutely know me, I'm currently the rec board chair, and I also am the coordinator for the basketball program here, it's the second year I'm in that. I've been a coach and a parent of kids who played here for seven years or so now. I don't know about that piece, historically, we are the only rec program remaining in the district. I've heard Berlin's recently from the most recent Berlin School Board meeting that they may consider going back to that model. My understanding is that a couple of years ago, Callis removed themselves from that model and went back to an in-school model. There's an athletic director that's chaired by Callis in Berlin. There is, I guess they have the title of athletic director, but I mean, there's a person who's different this year than it was last year, but who's overseeing that. And in my experience, Dodi does not have anyone who plays any of those roles, the principal takes on all those pieces. So we all operate, I think, a little bit differently. For me, what I've seen, having worked with, again, as a parent, as a coach, and now the last couple of years more, kind of behind the scenes, because of the way we're set up, I think the resources that we're able to offer students, the opportunities we're able to offer students, I think is a great benefit to the kids here at East Montpelier.
The rec board.
Meaning the rec board, the setup of our program, yes. So we have a coordinator for soccer program here, we have a coordinator for basketball, and we have a coordinator for baseball. And that's a little different, Central Vermont Little League kind of runs all that, so that, that's a little bit different position. But just in the last couple of years, in my dealing directly with basketball programs, I've seen other schools struggle in their model of the budget just to get five extra basketballs or to upgrade something they need just to be able to do what they need to, to really function at the same level as other schools. And because of our model, I've seen a situation where we have the resources, if we need it, to put, to put back into our programs, which we do on a yearly basis. And we've never, in my time as a coach here for years, or in my time here at more of an administrative level, have I seen a situation where we couldn't address a problem right away and make it a better situation for the kids in our programming as well as the rec field here.
Do we charge for, like basketball?
We do, there's a registration fee that we use, and that generally all that money goes back in to that program.
Same for soccer.
Same for soccer, yes.
And the Little League is different.
Baseball, again, baseball's a different animal, so I, because that's all Central Vermont Little League. But the money that the, we're allocated money by the town each year, that we use for maintenance on the field, that sort of thing. And then the money that we earn through registration for athletics here, as well as concessions at their soccer jambies, that sort of thing. That's all rolled back into the program. So last year I was able to, we had a, we had a switch in the, in the district where we switched the size of the balls that three, four students used to a smaller, more appropriately sized ball for them. We were able to upgrade our materials right away to get the appropriate number of balls, cages. I was able to get uniforms, a lot of pieces. And I, I heard and watched and tried to help with advice, other folks in the district struggle to even pull things together to that, even though we had all voted that this was the right thing to do, and it is the right thing to do. So just in my experience, I feel like our program is, is set up really well to give our students, our student athletes here, whatever they need. And because, again, we're a rec program, if there's somebody, we get students here who are Orchard Valley kids, or again, occasionally a kid from a Montpelier or a Callis or somewhere for some other reason, this is a better pick for them. We're allowed for those opportunities because of the resources we have. If a family can't afford to pay the registration fee, we can scholarship them. So I've seen a lot, a lot of great results in the program here in my time. I've seen the difference in the program, seeing it now the last two years, the rest of the programs in the district. So I feel strongly that we're doing things the right way.
That was kind of, I wanted to know how it's working.
I can speak the school's perspective. It's a huge relief for me not to have it on my shoulders or to ever think about it or deal with it. We do have our PE teacher who has been part of the rec board, so he's kind of that liaison between school and the rec. And he does all of the scheduling of the gym and that sort of thing, so I feel like the school does have a connection to the rec. We're not like totally out of the picture. And obviously, they're all our kids, but I don't deal with the headaches of what I hear some of the other principals and schools dealing with that side of things.
And we're, and I can at least speak to my time, we're in pretty constant contact with the administration here at the school. Not just related facilities, but anything that comes up along the way, so we're on the same page.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always kept in the know, but I don't have to be the one dealing with that day to day, which is for me, a huge headache.
I don't think principals have anything to do with it here, even when it was somebody.
I passed, I made a call.
I just, that's, I was hearing, actually from another parent was saying to me, well, Berlin has this AD. And I said, oh, I don't, we don't, I think ours is through the rec board, and she was asking me information about it, because her kids go to Berlin. And so then.
I'm not sure who that parent was, I know that there's recently from a meeting related to soccer wrap-up that I was at, that there is sort of a, I don't know what levels, a bit of a groundswell in Berlin to consider going to a rec program. And again, my understanding is that their last school board meeting a week or two ago, that that was brought up as just a discussion. I don't know. Yeah, they just had a discussion about it. I don't think there's any thoughts right now, either way, or leanings at this point.
From my perspective, it is not a proposal to do something.
Don't fix what isn't broken.
Correct.
That was what I was.
It was a mission.
Well, do the other schools own the rec fields versus?
No, even more big weeks, people.
To get just Berlin owning the field out.
Out and back they do. Callis has a mixture. Worcester's on town fields. Rumi's on town fields.
Okay. I think I hear a pretty strong consensus of if it.
Yeah, and it's been great, thank you.
Thank you. No, I wasn't trying to change.
No, 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 I know.
Yeah, I did, I did, I was doing that.
Can you information is always good, thanks, Jack.
I did it because I wasn't changing.
No, I didn't think it needed to be written, but to talk to them, we could do it in there too.
Okay.
There is an addition to the agenda.
Okay.
It would also be a release.
Under, probably under discussion and action.
Yeah, in action, yep.
And it would be called?
There, there would be, under discussion is about working with Callis for music instruction. And right now, there's points, I'm just gonna say this, please do not react, because we need to give you the discussion, but a point one reduction in music teacher.
At the EMS.
At the EMS.
Starting immediately would be the proposal.
So then, then the action item to?
To reduce it by point one.
I'm going to bring us back to the consent agenda. Matt, are you here with a particular piece?
I just miss you all terribly. No, I'm just interested in discussions about educational outcomes and budgets, so that's why I'm here.
Just if there was some particular thing, we can move it up.
No, thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to ask if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of October 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion of the minutes of October 24th? Seeing none. All of those in favor of approving minutes that's presented, please say aye.
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 Those that have seen, and that brings us to budget draft.
Okay, before we get too far into this, I just wanted to do some context setting with the budget and where we're at right now. And Alicia will take care, all detailed questions will go to Alicia. So I don't have to field those. No, in all seriousness, one of the things I want to talk about is a little bit just where we are this year and with budget development. So Stephen was part of a meeting at the executive committee back in August, where we tried to think up of a way of developing budgets this year with Act 46 not knowing where that was going to conclude or what the recommendation would be from the state board. Also, during this time of transition, I believe trying to be as open with a budget process as, even more than we have been in previous years is a good place for us to be. As of today, and I've been saying this to all of the boards, and you're the last one to hear it, I don't even know what town report's gonna look like in the town report. So things are really up in the air. I think when that, when we have times like these, the best thing to do is keep things as open, even more open than we think they should be. So my, my decision that I've made, and I've talked with all the chairs about this, and have been given support of it, is that what we're gonna do is, we're gonna bring you, this is a level service budget. Nothing's really changed in here, it's kind of taking up, there were student need changes, we adjusted for that and gave you what the budget is for next year. You know, we know that it looks like the board's gonna approve us to be a forced merger from what they provisionally have done. So looking at that, you know, we're, our plan is to combine all the budgets the way they are into one budget and not look at things across the whole spectrum and look for FY21 for efficiencies and reduction and savings. So that said, I still would like to have as much input into the budget process. So my plan is that we bring you this here in November, and December we'll bring you a draft too. Because once the board, the state board rules, the board that has authority over FY20 is the new board that is seated at town, is elected at town meeting day, if all the timelines work. So in that case, the transition board that's called for in the articles, that sits somewhere from the 30th day beyond the state ruling, they have two tasks, to set up a way for elections to happen and develop a recommended budget to be recommended to the new board. So I think any, and knowing that most of the people that'll be on the transition board, and I'm inferring that at least some of our, if not most of our members of that new board will come from existing board members, that doing this work here together will make it a lot easier and that a lot smoother. So my plan is to keep bringing you budget, bringing you a budget December and in January. It may mean we, usually you've had a meeting on Martin Luther King night, because that's the traditional, it's the third Monday. My real quandary is right now, and I was talking to one of our town clerks today about it, is I said, I just don't know what the town report's gonna look like. It could be as much as the principal and superintendents and board chairs' letters and saying, please stay tuned for more information on the budget. You know, I think we'll have some other things in there about Act 46 and things going forward. But I just don't want to presume that, you know, and it's also gonna be letting our electorate know that, hey, you used to get a town report that looked like this, and now it looks like this. And why is that, and where we're at, and I think that's gonna take a lot of communication starting here in December. I'm really kind of waiting for the, I've already started working with Ben Marrow, our communication expert, that has done all the publications you've seen the past two years, at putting something together as an FAQ of what's going on. But just really waiting for that, I was working on that today. So the budget that you have here includes 11, 11.8% health increase. I'll let Alicia go through some of the transitions. The WCSU assessments, when this was developed, this budget, was just set at 3%. The WCSU budget, not the assessments, but the budget, came in at 1.96%. And the executive committee came back for us to come with more possible additions for improving student outcomes. So we'll be talking about that tomorrow night. And then, so then you see overall the pieces that are in here.
I can talk specifics.
So that's why I was gonna let you go for there.
Is it, does everyone have page four, or do you, are you, do you have that?
I saw it.
Okay.
I just, I didn't, I didn't get to work to.
I'll, I'll share the staffing changes, because most of that is actually reflective of this year's changes. So last year, when you budgeted for this year, we had changes in staffing and changes in student needs, which was actually a decrease in student needs this year from what we had last year, which is that .5 savings in a parent educator. We also don't need that .5 parent educator next year, so it's not here now, and we're not adding anything back next year. And then the staffing change right below that, the 17,000, is we had changes in staff. So those who left or retired were more expensive than those who are here now. Other than that, it's basically taking what we have currently. So that, that ended up being a little over $52,000 savings this year in looking ahead to next year. But otherwise, everything is rolled up from what we currently have to next year in this draft, does that make sense? With one exception, I believe, and that is the new agenda item to talk about. I don't think it's.
That's not, that's not there. It's not there, but it's not that much.
It's a little bit of savings.
That's not much.
I think it's a little over 7,000.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone has a question.
I mean, it's not a question, that's not something you guys have been told, but I'm just curious. The, the health insurance inflation.
Yep.
Did that have to do with, are you guys using a different?
We're still using V-Hive, we've switched plans.
Switched plans, but are you, are you using a different intermediary?
Oh yeah, we are, but that.
That was out of wash, or?
That's, yeah, that's not, that doesn't even get into this. Yeah. That's a whole nother.
So it doesn't get into, it's accounted?
It, it, it.
We're not gonna.
It doesn't have a big effect overall. There's a lot of talk about it, but budgetarily, it's not a big.
Oh, okay.
It's not a big effect. Yeah.
I, I didn't need details. Percent comes in, I think. We can do the same thing we're doing this year for that budget change. I'm happy with it.
Yeah, the other contextual that Stephen, you've heard me say, but I haven't had a chance to say to this board is, the current consumer price index for September for a 12-month for New England is 3.3%. And government and educational spending is 2.9% in New England. So that's the inflation rate, some people know what is that, but it's Consumer Price Index, CPI. Just to give you a point of reference.
So you're saying.
So the 1.6 is that?
Yeah, that's, I think we've done, I think we've done well. I mean, all of our budgets in Washington Central on the expenditure side, expenditure sides, we're doing great across all our budgets. I think our highest might be 3, 3.2 or 3.3 for level service.
Well, we've talked some, and I don't remember who or what meetings or what, I have no idea what's going on, I think sometimes. But over the past three, four, five years, we've been able to continually, gradually position where East Montpelier is spending-wise across the state from right at the very top. I still wouldn't want to suggest we're not a high-spending school, but we've been steadily moving down the list. So closer and closer to average spending. So I'm not, like I said, if we can keep doing exactly what we're doing and at that percentage, I'm happy with, I wouldn't look to take more out of it.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I wanted just to ask the question, remember last year, we took out some money and then, you know, it was just fund balance, but there were some needs, and we had like reduced 30% interventions in one area. We're, I'm assuming we're not doing this, and if we needed more, you would be saying that here or not?
I haven't, you haven't asked the question yet, so I haven't told you what I think.
Okay, that was, would be the most important.
Yes, no, so we have, we have increased interventions from what we had last year. I feel like on the academic side of things, we're in a good place, and we have, we have the right people doing the right things. I had talked last month about, we don't have like a math interventionist and a reading, they, they do whatever's needed based on the data. The one area that we've spent a lot of time talking about, and this is no surprise to anyone, are our students in trauma or those who have social, emotional, behavioral, I won't even say behavioral, social and emotional needs. They come in, in a, in a very different place than, than we would hope for them to come in. And they, we have, I don't know exactly what that would look like, but I feel like if there's any place that we're not meeting kids' needs and, and we're doing a great job of, we have a cohort of teachers who works with Dave Melnick, this is our second year working with him, bringing strategies back to the school, sharing with our colleagues. There's another group of teachers and myself, we're gonna be taking a course with Dave beginning in January. So I feel like we're trying to get educated and, and learn how to better serve them. But that is probably our pocket of students who I feel the least great about what we're doing and how we're serving them. I have no answer to you what that should or could look like, just knowing that I feel like on the academic side and the interventions and, you know, when we talk content areas, I feel like we're, you know, I feel like we're doing the right things for kids. The social, emotional, trauma background children and families, I feel like we need to do a better job.
So I know that you're saying we don't know what that means, but what that means, that we should be putting something aside just in case that we are able to figure out, since we're also involved in, you know, closing the gap.
Right, right.
And that, and we know that that's one of the biggest.
We've talked a lot about what could that look like or should that look like, and, you know, I think it's gonna take some more exploring. You know, we talked about, is it a, is it a, you know, some sort of a counselor? Or is it, you know, looking at how we use our guidance services? Or is it having somebody work with, be able to be more of a liaison between school and home? I think it, it's something that is gonna require more thought.
So I would say this, and this is one of the things that the executive committee will hear tomorrow night. We can't give you details. We know where the issues are, we haven't had time to work with our staff to really try to figure out what the details are. This is the tough place of budgeting, where a decision has to be made on a money amount. And, you know, and that's what Alicia and I have been talking about this a long time. I'm not, I'm the one that's pushing hard on, don't think of staff the way you've considerably thought about it. I mean, one of the things, and I remember from 25 years ago on my teaching is we had social workers in the schools that I serviced. And those are very helpful to go out and work with families. It's not that our guidance counselors do that too, so, you know, what is it that it needs to be? And I don't think we have that thing figured out, and I don't think there's anyone that's, that really does have that figured out about how you crack, you know, really help kids that are really struggling. It's a, you know, it's a, you see it in, it's, it's nationwide and probably international in some realm as well.
I think one of the issues here at East Montpelier is the number of students we have and the amount of FTEs we have of a guidance counselor. I don't, I'm not saying that she is the answer or isn't the answer. But she was reduced pretty drastically when we hired her, because we wanted a shared position with Callis, so we kind of gave some up and, and knowing that we had Mr. Sherwin's position.
We have the full-time behavior coach.
And so the behavior is, you know, I see that as a diff, right? Like he can, so when Mary Beth is here, basically what happens, it's a lot of tag teaming. You know, she'll, she'll deal with a situation, and then she's not back for two days, so he'll take over and do what he can. And he's very skilled with the behavior side of things, but this isn't always behavior. You know, or it may manifest in behavior, but it's a different, different issue, or it's not, not behavior at all. So just trying to figure out what, what is the best solution to this issue, I don't know right now. But I, I feel like we are, we are not serving a population of students in a way that we should be serving them. I don't know what that looks like yet, you know, we haven't, I, I know staff come to me all the time, and, you know, we have some pretty major families in crisis, and pretty major crises. But what the, is it a dollar amount? I don't know. Is it a person? I don't know. I just know what, you know, what I hear coming to me.
So you're like, you're sort of in the first step, right?
Yeah.
You've sort of identified what is an area for improvement, but we don't have a course of action to think about or consider or budget for.
So, I mean, here's the thing. We could go, I mean, Alicia and I can go sit in a room and make up a course of action, but that's not the way, right way to do it. The right way is to get our experts who are out there working with the kids and say, so what do we, what do we know? Let's review the, that's, I just said three months worth of work.
Right, so what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm being overly simplistic about it, but what I'm hearing is that this isn't something that we're gonna do for this budget cycle.
Not unless we get something between now and next, next budget cycle for you. And that's, that doesn't mean we won't.
This is, and I don't, this is good work to be doing, like identifying this issue is important. But in terms of the work of this board, it's sort of like what you were just saying, unless we have a proposal in front of us.
Right now is to bring an awareness to you. You know, I do feel like, I feel like this budget represents staffing-wise, absolutely, to meet the student needs academically. I feel like, you know, there was an increase in interventions this year from last year. We knew that, you know, things kind of dipped last year because we didn't have the personnel, and I feel like we have the right staff. I feel like this is the next right body of work to start thinking about is, okay, so, you know, what about these kids in crisis and families in crisis, and how do we support them, and what does that look like? And what's the school's responsibility? And in asking teachers, which I have, I've done a lot of listening to teachers, but asking them, so what would that look like if, if, you know, this child's needs are met, what would that look like? And I feel like that is the next body of work for us to, so, you know. I wanted to bring the awareness to you and, and see what your thoughts were on it, and, you know, you tell me what, should it be something that we think about right now, should it be something to say?
And from, from my point, this is gonna sound cruel, but it isn't, we're not there with a plan. And the other thing is, we haven't, we're just starting to, trying to engage, we've been trying for a long time and working with our outside agency partners. So it's getting that really clear. And it's, you know, all the schools in Washington Central and most of the schools that I know with this are dealing with the same issues. It's just that the issues have become more acute and much earlier.
Yeah.
In age. And so for elementary schools, it's new, but we've had some of these same issues in middle schools and high schools, it's just that we're seeing it earlier.
And it may not even necessarily be new, we have this, a different awareness of it, right, and, and. People care and they, not that they didn't before, but it's like, oh yes, and look at this child and this explains a lot now that we're better educated about. What happens outside of school, so what can we do about it? And the teachers in this building, one of the best things about them is that they care so much and they want something to happen. You know, they don't turn their eye and look the other way when a child comes in.
But I think that's one of the things, you know, like we can't completely let it fall just on them, because they're gonna do something, you know, vital protocol, whatever. But if we can, we know that a kid can't lose a year or wait. So even if we are able to put, you know, a very little pocket of money aside, while you guys, I think, because we just budget once a year. Right, we don't budget all the time, so if every school pledged to put, you know, X amount, whatever that is. Social worker, they, while you guys are figuring out what, what you're doing, because that kid doesn't, you know, doesn't have that year to lose. And since we're doing all that work in trauma, you know, and I, I totally understand what you're saying, but I just feel like. We know that, if we know that the need is there and so.
But I can't quantify the need.
The need not, the need might not be addressed by money.
Yeah.
Might be addressed by changes within the system.
The way the school is running.
I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of just putting money in the budget, because maybe we need it.
Maybe we need it.
I mean, if there's a specific proposal, but if it's. Do we wanna just kind of put this slush fund in there, that's a, that's a bad word to use, to put this contingency money in that we don't even know if we're gonna use? I, I don't think we want to even have that discussion.
What I, what I would like to do and I will begin doing is having the conversation with the staff around what, you know, what, what is, what is the current reality? What are the needs you see, how are they not being met, what would that look like if they were met? Because it's just not a conversation we've had, we just haven't, we haven't had to to this point and I feel like we do.
Well, and, so maybe this comes hard too. I don't question the caring and I don't question the sincere efforts. But it, an issue like this may require input from expertise outside of our school.
I think that would be definite step.
It has, the, the staffs have to be involved and I agree a hundred percent. But I, in some ways, I think it's unfair to say, okay, staff of East Montpelier, figure out this problem.
So Laura, I would say this, that's what you have a general fund balance for.
Okay, so as long as, okay.
Right, because if somewhere.
If we need, if we need it, we, I mean, you guys, you know this, if we, if we need it, if we can't reconfigure the budget, we usually come to you, but. All the principals know my first question, which is, so where's that in your budget, where are you gonna shift? And usually we find it.
Right, because it's really a matter of reprioritizing. Any other discussion of budget draft number one? Move us along.
So just, we'll be coming back in a month, is you, this is, so as far as draft two, do you want a draft two, do you need a draft two?
Well, I want them to have a draft two and I want them to know more numbers. And frankly, I want them to start to see some comparisons of what's it look like individually with the whole, we're, we need the next.
You mean as part of the SU?
I want them to look at it two different ways, I mean, yeah, there, we need to have another budget discussion. So that they can.
What is direction?
But we're, we're not telling Alicia she needs to.
Right.
To, we're not taking money out.
We're comfortable with the bottom line.
So that's what I was asking, sorry, okay, so you don't, right.
And I think if you happen to have the conversation where you come up with a potential plan of action for this trauma. You can add it to budget two if you, you know, and we could evaluate that, don't be afraid to do that if. You magically have nine million hours.
A lot of time, a lot of time.
And external partners that all fall into line exactly as they should, of course. So usually it happens.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the report looked great too, I'm excited about the numbers too. Not a lot, but it's.
Yeah.
A population.
So yeah, you'll see the, the included in there was all the budget trends, what you've seen every year, so I didn't think I needed to explain that, but then, any questions over the budget? Multi-year budget trends, and the last page on page sixteen is the one that has the key figures for you about what is a penny, what's the expense budget.
Could you remind me the individual enrollment versus equalized people?
Ah, yes, so what happens is, is what they, there's factors for different categories of a student. I think that's the nicest way of saying it, so if a student is on free and reduced lunch, there's an increase, there's a twenty-five percent increase. A student is, is receiving English as a second language service. There's an increase to that, what they wanna do at the end, if there's, let's say seventy-five thousand students in Vermont, which is approximately right. They want the equalized pupils to actually meet the actual students. So the way they do that is the last factor that gets changed is what is the percentage of an elementary or the weight of an elementary student? Last year was about point nine three or point nine four, but it really changed last year, it came up s, like almost three or four percentage points. Because some, the, what was called phantom students from years ago were going away, and so, because of a whole nother piece. So that equalize means there's a certain weighting factor, like for every high school student nine through twelve, there's a three percent bump. High school is more expensive to run than the other schools. So that all gets put into the mixture, and you'll hear about the weighting formula, is there's a study that the legislature asked for and to redo all that in one seventy-three. And Vermont has one of the. Least equitable funding formulas for students in the nation. It's been graded and it's not, it does not do well for kids in poverty or minority. And so, and Lindy's district, Barry's, John's been one of the people championing that, is that it's really not funding equ, very equitable. For Vermont, and we've been graded on a pretty low curve on that, so that's one of the reasons they're looking at that, is to maybe reestablish the weights that are given for students with certain categories. Does that answer enough, Darcy?
We also are among the highest per student spending in the nation. Not the equalized, but just what we spend on kids and part of that's the rural nature of it. And it's hard to make it work.
Three point three in the SBA.
So, I was gonna share three things, so I, because we didn't have time to talk about the conference and Bill was at the conference two, three on October. Now it seems so long ago, that's why I like doing it right after, it seems so long ago and I'll be grief, you have to go to Stephen. So the conference was designing for equity and opportunity, and the three things that I wanted to highlight, highlight was. First, Caroline Hale, who was one of the presenters, I ended up going to her workshop to bill her to her speech at the, at the beginning. She was wonderful, she did a whole history on why, you know, Vermont is ninety-three point seven percent white. But three things that are related to the outcomes and that we, we've been talking about is that she, one of the things that she said through the conference was that. The assumptions made by adults of kids have a greater impact on the achievement gap. As we are talking about this in our quality committee, we keep talking about that, and if we don't talk about all those biases, we don't have the diversity in our schools, but we have the diversity in socioeconomics. So, so that was, you know, great, and you can Google her up and she has great things on, on YouTube and she has a small TED Talk. And then I've shared this with part of the group in the quality committee that, and just wanted to share with you two that we're so focused on the outcome, sometimes that we forget about the experience. So, and, you know, I feel like it's important, it's important we've been doing a good job about acknowledging the whole child. And how that translates into when we monitor, we, we're still, you know, we are doing a greater job now of how we monitor, considering past meeting. And we're still trying to, to link, you know, that other part, the whole child, as, you know, or what the experience in school means for them. And, and then the last thing was, she talked a lot about, and I'm big in this, interdependence is the true north, she kept saying through her other part of the conference. And part of that resilience movie and the trauma training, we keep talking about, you know, how that connection, we got one adult is so important. And what she was saying is that it's also between, it starts with us and that we're all interdependent, like, you know, like now that we're gonna be a whole, just one. We're all interdependent with one another and the more that we realize that, the better that we can get at writing new stories, is what they call. Because he, she focused a lot on that we do at this favor with the, to the kids, not just the diversity kids, but the. The other kids, that, you know, the ninety-three point seven percent white kids in Vermont, because they are not aware of this. Being able to be in school for diversity is also a handicap for them, so she, and, you know, and it's something that we need to acknowledge either, you know, by the books we read or whatever we do. So, the, I keep saying the last thing, but there's two more. And then the last thing she said was that, there were two presenters, but I'm just gonna share her today, the equity is verve and is the process, not the end. And sometimes when we talk especially, just, or we keep referring as equity, it's like being that endpoint for us, like how do we get there and, you know, it's. And, and that is a product of, of design, so the better that we do to redesign what we do right now, which is what we are trying to do. And last, and I wanted to ask Bill about this, is that the NEA had Beth, Beth O'Brien write, do a little movie that is called I Am From Here. And they showcased this movie and people that have attended the Equity Conference, I think you were at the last, no, you were not, but, so the Equity Conference in Montpelier too. This movie is just, the way that it's described about institutional racism in Vermont schools, you know, it's different where we are. But Bill talked about that there was some prep work needed before showing them at schools, and I would like to move that process along. I know that we have a lot of, it's a half an hour movie, but I think it's super educational for.
Let the kids do it, the kids are doing it.
The what?
The kids are doing it, Alicia hasn't been contacted yet, but the kids are doing it.
I don't know, yeah, so I just wanted to bring awareness, I didn't know.
The high school kids are doing something.
Yeah, you're gonna get contacted soon.
And they're the ones that were with you?
They're at Berlin, they're at Berlin, right, yeah.
Okay.
They're at Berlin, they're getting ready for Berlin.
And it's I Am From Here?
No, it's not that, but they have something similar.
Okay.
Yeah, but in any event, that, that movie would be, so Beth O'Brien is the author, is called I Am From Here. And is the, not the author, but the NEA sponsored it and she's the filmmaker. And, so, can I ask, what is the prep work needed?
Our staffs need some training, I'm in a public meeting, I'm not gonna talk more about it, I'll be glad to talk to you later.
But it sounds like there is momentum from the students.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the thing is that it's on the website of the, I don't, the link is not on the website, but Martha has been going all around, talking about the movies of, you know. One way or another, the teachers are gonna find about it, and it's basically five teenagers talking about what is for them. And my point is that, especially in, you know, in our school, there is not diversity. So just, you know, it's very informative, you know, why wait until there is a break to, and, and this is a very easy way to show. I don't think there's anything in that movie that is not appropriate for.
No.
Not even for little kids.
No, no, yeah, no.
So it'd be great to, you know, I just wanted to bring attention to that. And, and then I'll talk about the other guy at the next meeting, because otherwise, you guys need to go.
Okay.
So thank you for listening up.
Thank you for sharing that.
That brings us to three point four, Act forty-six, update on subcommittees. There are two subcommittees.
Yeah, I'll go first.
Who wants to go first?
Yeah, you can go first.
All right, so, let's go.
Oh, yeah, but I see you got it, I did get the email tonight.
So I'm the dead committee. Yeah, uh, um, uh, so, we've met three times, I felt like today's meeting was actually pretty, um. A little bit more effective than the last one, we were in the process of reviewing, we went over pros and cons for five. I don't know if like final options or, but, you know, potential. For how to handle the debt, all except for one would require legislative actions, so. But we're putting together pros and cons of each and we're gonna develop a report. Um, to present at the December fifth supervisory board meeting. If you guys have any questions about.
Who's on the committee?
Um, who's on the committee, Scott Thompson, Rick, I don't know how to pronounce Rick's last name.
Keane.
Kane, um, Will Baker, Peter.
Schrober.
Schrober and myself, nobody from Middlesex. And that's all I have, unless you guys have more questions.
I, I guess I do have a question, just because I got some input, I didn't get this when I talked to you, but I got a, a phone call from Janet this afternoon. And we had talked about, and I know that your debt committee brought up, where we talked about bringing part of our, or as much of our capital plan into paying the debt. And they did some research of what, you know, that is less than thirty-five cents for every dollar on the occasion.
Yep.
But in any event, that we should think smart about that as a whole, not just as us, if that is the best investment, I shared this with even when he walked in today.
All right, I'm gonna head home then. Yep, bye.
His fever's back over one oh three, so.
Is he okay? Oh, no.
My son's had a fever and so.
He's home?
He's home alone, so. I've gotta help.
Okay, well, I hope he feels better.
I hope he feels better.
I hope you don't catch it.
Yeah, mainly.
It's almost inevitable we don't catch it. I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yeah, who comes first?
So, so what is, that is, we have thought, you brought this up, but that we're smart about it, so what they were saying is that we should think about, and so, how to think about this. Is that it might be better used to do work in other schools than to pay down the debt, just because of the interest rate that we paid for.
You have to redo the bonds anyway, it's one of the things I was saying tonight.
Redo?
We have to, we don't, I don't know if I can just transfer the bonds, but Laurie was talking to me, we have to reissue all the bonds going into a merge district.
I think we have to think pretty carefully about that.
Yes.
Because it doesn't really reduce the burden or other towns and.
On the tax, yeah, and so.
Right, so the discussion, discussion about that was, it was, all, any. Any, it was a more of a sign of goodwill to the other towns than anything, realizing that it wasn't gonna have too much of an impact on.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that, that makes a lot of sense, like I say, although, there might be some other options.
Who, where did this modeling come from?
Which model?
We don't have, we, we don't have a.
So Scott, Scott did some modeling.
Scott did some modeling.
Oh, right.
But you, okay.
And we discussed that, the modeling he did, it actually didn't have the correct number, the correct numbers in some of it, so.
Okay.
Um, so that was a part of the discussion.
But you're right.
I, I struggle with, I will say that I struggle with numbers, because, and I was asking Bill for clarification earlier, because. I don't think we can nail it down to the actual effect on each town very accurately anyways, until we get into the budgeting process.
And the numbers that have been put publicly on front porch forum and places are not accurate.
Or the tax.
Yeah.
Coming out, that never happens.
Yeah, yeah.
But, just because they're said loudly doesn't mean that they're accurate.
Well, that's it, so. Right, so I, I guess what my emphasis is today was, I don't wanna publish numbers that, especially when they're long-term numbers that. Would potentially change yearly, that wouldn't, wouldn't accurately reflect the total burden on the other towns that, uh, yeah.
So is one of the ideas to restructure the bond, or just?
I don't know, I was talking with Laurie. I don't know, I was talking with Laurie the other day, it was a quick five minute conversation, but we were starting to list all the tasks we have to do and we have to reissue all the bonds. I don't know if that means just change the names on them or if we actually have to go back out.
Once it's.
Merged.
Go back out for it.
I'm hoping we don't have to go back out, we can just change names on all the bonds, 'cause the rates will be a lot worse now than they were then.
That's, like, that would be.
Oh my goodness.
I don't think we do, but I mean, it's, we have to do a lot of work with banks, I mean, we have forty two. Yes, forty two different bank accounts right now.
Mm-hmm.
Six times seven, so, and we're gonna bring them down to six.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
So I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of financial work and a lot of legal entity work. So, I mean, once, I mean, that, I mean, I've been telling this to everybody, once there's a, from the board, because of the timetable, there's a rule in from the state board, we're gonna start, 'cause just to get to July one. We gotta start.
It's fast.
Yeah, it's a lot.
We gotta start.
So, I mean, one of the, one of the thing, I mean, not, coming from East Montpelier, it will sound selfish, but one of the things I try to keep stating is, we continue to look at whatever the bond, the bond period is. But in reality, we're gonna be a merged district for the next, I said a thousand years today.
But you know what I mean? For next.
For as long as we can foresee. So eventually.
Short term problem, in other words.
This is a short term problem and it's not a great problem to begin and I understand, but eventually things will iron out.
Well, the last time this was done was fifty years ago, 'cause it was mid sixties, that they closed off one room schoolhouses and built this one, did the same thing with Callis and.
Yeah, but it.
People seem to forget that it's been done.
Right, the thing that, and I just wanna state the facts, 'cause with the, at that point, there was federal money on the doll, on the, on the ground to build the schools.
Correct, that built these schools. Yeah.
But that's the difference.
The people's local money did not pay for these schools.
There is, and state money.
Yeah, state money, yeah, there's, I mean, there's been no state money since two thousand three, two thousand four.
Right.
Right.
Which goes back to the original, one of the many rumbles about the bond, which is that we had to do work when there was no external money whatsoever. If those supports had not been deleted along the way, then our debt.
Yeah, well, I I think that it would have, it's gonna have to come back.
I don't think it is for.
Because it, well, it's, with all the merger, schools are gonna need, and if this thing.
No, there's a pressure.
It's not gonna come back through Scott's administration for sure, but, but it should, if that's where.
No, I don't see it coming.
I think once it's been taken away like that, it's up to you to take care of your buildings or your schools and.
But it was not for taking care of your buildings and your schools, but if it's, if if really truly what we care is for the best education of our kids, they're building, I know we do, but you know.
Yeah, but it's really just a matter of, I I mean, when you really break it down, it's just a matter of semantics, right? Which.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause taxes, yeah, are our taxes.
Hot, the money comes out of, 'cause it's all the same dollars, I said, so.
And it's all state dollars.
So arguably, this actually, hmm, at least it's less complicated, because you're not trying to bank on some external dollars and leverage those funds.
It's all coming from the edge fund.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, technically, we are banking on it.
And hopefully it's a realized debt, you think?
Yes, we are. Yeah. So the next committee, the Articles of Agreement Committee, eh, we have met three times. We're gonna meet tomorrow at four thirty, if anybody wants to join us. We created a, a little table of priorities, so that we could start working on the Articles of Agreement. And we had one really good meeting where we got through, you know, all of our first priority articles, which was nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And then at our last meeting, we started to get in more of the hot items, so we didn't do as much progress. We're still waiting for, eh, the Board of Education met last Thursday, not last Tuesday, yeah, last Tuesday. And at that meeting, there were some changes, we had sent some questions, we, we wanted to clarify who could be appointed and what Act forty nine really meant, if we actually can write Articles of Agreement. She came back with their amendments, so we're still trying to clarify that. Get a council bill reached out to Scott Cameron and Tracy is her name?
No, Patricia Tracy.
Patricia Tracy, eh, who's, yeah, 'cause he's in the process of retiring, I don't know if you had any luck with Pietro. He was gonna reach out to Pietro and tomorrow we'll give some options for who we're gonna pick as counsel. And right now, the plan is to move ahead and keep, eh, you know, drafting Articles of Agreement with the understanding that they are amendments, but if we put them out to vote, that we would have the Articles of Agreement that best represent our new unified district. Eh, Donna, we sent her some questions after the meeting to try to get it on, on writing and she's hoping to get back to us before her meeting tomorrow, she didn't get back to me today. And they're also putting out, um, and Secretary French asked her to put an outline of what really the dates meant on those ninety days. What does it mean and, you know, you're gonna go for a vote, so he's trying to do, do a more comprehensive cheat sheet of what that is. But by any means, we're not, we're not done and we're hoping that on December fifth, I guess we would have to decide what the next course of action is. We haven't talked about that in our meeting yet, but eh, you know, the, but at least my hope, and this doesn't represent the entire eh, board, is that we're gonna be able to go through all the Services of Agreement, get this to our legal counsel and be able to pass this on for that ninety day period and if they need to be cleaned up, but give something so that we're able to respond to something as opposed to trying to write Articles of Agreement in a committee of twenty. So, I don't know if you have something, do I, Bill or Matt is here? I've been, I acknowledge that I've been driving Matt a little crazy with my approach, but I just tend to be an optimistic. But, yeah.
So who's on that committee?
It it's a good committee, it's Matt, Chris McBay, and of course, I'm gonna forget about everybody right now, Chris Winters. Eh, trying to go around the table of the last one.
Dorothy.
Dorothy and Carrie. So it's, it's. So I I think everybody has the intention of our, I I I think we all feel like it would be nice to put something out to the voters. I do understand that it's gonna be a question with the town clerks, you know, to bring out a special vote. And, you know, and we wouldn't want them to vote no on this, 'cause what it means would be, serves them up very dear, right? You put out to. We would just have the, the existing, what are they, I can't even think about it.
Articles Agreement.
No, no, but the existing, they're called the.
The article, the boards, the Vermont State.
The drafts, the draft, so we would just have those thirteen, we wouldn't have been able to.
The choice.
To put anything on it. And it's not like we're gonna be that creative either, because we're in, you know, it has to comply with the law and we're looking at the other, other places and, I don't know what else to tell you, yeah.
I don't think there's much else to say, I think he gave a nice update of where you're at.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe that brings us to three point five, the additional.
Oh, discussion.
Discussion item.
I was approached by Kat, um, there, the principal at Callis. Recently, there is a need for a music teacher in her building. Very part-time position and we currently have a point seven FTE music teacher in East Montpelier. So she does not work Mondays or Tuesday mornings, Sam doesn't. Um, the need from Callis was a, um, a point four position, so two days a week, which would mean we would need to find a decrease in a half day a week to make it work. Um, Sam and I spent a lot of time looking at her schedule and trying to make it be a doable job and not cut services for kids, of course. Um, we were able to make it work, she, it would be a very tight schedule for her. She would be, um, at Callis all day on Monday, a half a day on Tuesday and a half a day on Friday. Um, but I was able to make it work with classroom teachers to do some shifting. Um, she's going to just be, um, her planning periods will look differently, right? She may be there planning for here or here, and that happens, it's happened with the guidance counselor, it happens with the art teacher and it works. Um, the, the benefit to all of this is that it will serve Callis kids, which they need a music teacher, um, right now. And the benefit for Sam is it will give her full time work, which she's really wanted and needed. Um, so Kat actually texted me as we sat down, please let me know what the board says.
Yeah, I got the same text, she texted both at the same time, I was driving.
Oh, okay, I didn't open it, but, um.
Bluetooth, Bluetooth was three D net.
So I would like to make the recommendation, it can work, um, it can work without cutting programs to kids. Um, and with, with Sam just needing to be a little bit more flexible and with shifting in schedules, which the teachers were good about. The hope is to begin after Thanksgiving, we started working on this about a week and a half ago. Um, but it would mean a change in her FTE beginning after Thanksgiving. And, and the proposal would be, um, that this would continue on Callis and, and we've had great working relationships with lots of other teachers in the past and continue to have that and it just works well for staff to be able to have full time work.
Did they have a music teacher in?
I can't go into it.
No, I don't, I was just.
But they did have one.
They do not have a music teacher now.
Now.
Right now, but they had in the past.
They, they had.
They want an increase to a point four.
They had one, resigned.
They, right.
Effective last Thursday.
There's no increase for Callis, it's just to maintain.
Okay, gotcha, maintain the point four, gotcha, okay.
Yes, okay.
So the only question that occurs to me is, can, can a teacher have like one point one FTE between the two districts?
No.
No, by labor law, we can't do that. Nay nay.
Labor law will allow us to do that.
And it's actually, when all is done, it's probably like a, a point six five in the point. I mean, it's a little bit of, it's not quite, in order to make it work, there's like a half an hour one day extra we need her. And it, we'll figure out the math piece of it, but, um.
I, you know, if you could do a one point one, then financially, I mean, yes, it means a point one more.
But I think it depends us, because now Sam has a full time job.
Yeah, and she needs it, and she, yeah.
I think that's good all the way around.
And, and she is an incredible music teacher, Callis is gonna be lucky to have her.
Yes.
So, uh, that's the discussion portion, if there's any other questions.
Um, is there any objection to going right to the action agenda for that?
So they can text Kat?
Kat will be fine, she can wait, she can wait till the end.
They can make a motion to, to.
It would be reduced.
To reduce point one, the music position in East Montpelier and accept the recommendation.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed Epstein? Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, I believe we are on to administration report, page seventeen.
I don't know if there's any questions.
Do you know, Poppy, have this mass out to for the number of kids in the platform, the school?
No, I shouldn't. Total numbers?
So we have.
Oh, I, I wrote it down.
Did you?
Yeah. Um, a hundred and eighty-nine K through six plus the thirty-three K is covered in nineteen.
Thank you.
Um.
I guess I did have one, one question, it was mostly because I don't know what, right, so eh, common, when, create common assignments, that homework, like, common assignments or project based projects for the.
The, um.
The comprehensive balance assessment system.
The October end service?
Yeah.
With, so, yeah, so I can talk to that. Um, so I was here with the, all the kindergarten teachers from the SU. We kind of broke up by grade clusters and they met in all the different buildings around the SU and they created, so what the kindergarten team did is they took all their fall early literacy assessments and early math assessments and created assignments based on those so that every child in kindergarten across the entire SU is being, what parents are seeing on the portal is something similar. So there's, they're called assignments, assignment's not really the best term to use. Um, it's really a opportunity for learning, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, it could be an interview, it could be a formative assessment, it could be something in writing, it could be having a child read out loud to you. So it's not really a like handwritten assignment like you think of an assignment. But, um, so, so across the grades in K through six, they worked on having common assignments so that every third grader in the SU is getting scored on the same types of things. They're not all the same, but they worked on what they could create in common together. That work started in August, at our August end service, we spent a half a day together and then we continued to do it in October after playing with the, the system for a while. Um, and some people are hoping to do it again in January, though we haven't determined what that looks like yet. It's just so that we're on the same page as far as what teachers are assessing and sharing with parents.
You're basically calibrating your.
Exactly, our assignments.
Assignments and grading and assessing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aligned with your report, Cisco.
Exactly, yeah.
And then the other was just the comment of like, amazing, that eh, in one of, I, I was trying to find it, but I can't remember where it is, but that you were able to put in that block of eight thirty to nine, especially, they still have very quick action.
We're still, we, we need to talk about this all the time. I mean, this is a goal of mine this year, we, and it's not something that we'll wait for the next round of a master schedule next year to do, we have to meet these kids' needs now, like, we have to figure this out.
Can't find it, what was it, others?
So, yeah, so we're continuing to, to try to figure out how to get the interventions to kids in all areas that they need it and not have to prioritize. And that was something that all the special educators, we've done it here and there with certain kids, you know, we have some kids, especially older kids, who don't wanna be pulled and would rather come in before anyone's even here, so they don't know they're getting services. Um, so it's a model we've used, but not in this way, so it is pretty exciting.
The younger ones are, take me, take me.
Yeah, right, they're like, can I go with him? Not so much when you get to sixth grade usually.
I think that brings us to fiscal.
Yeah, and there really hasn't been much of a change, I know Alicia could do this as well, it's just, we're running the budget. I mean, there hasn't been any change in the, the fund balance, projected fund balance, so. It will get to January, that'll be the next time, because we'll have reenrollment for benefits, happens January one.
Um, one thing that I should bring to your attention that we're having looked at as far as facilities goes, and it's not in my report, but I've asked Todd to look into it. Um, we have, as you know, and it was a hot topic during construction, the path that needed to be, right? That was a big issue. It's not really a path anymore, because the grass is grown and it's, it, it's, it's a really big challenge to keep it a path, especially in the winter, um, although I would say in the summer also. Um, so I had Todd ask for some quotes on what would it look, what would it cost to pave it, so it's actually a path? Or what would it look like to have concrete like the sidewalks? So just so you know, um, because it's, it is, I mean, there's the, the path, the stones in the path are actually all in the grass and the grass is all in the path.
Or in the school.
Or, or in the school, tracked in, so it's a, it is an issue, um, and it's been one we've been dealing with for four years, but it's really actually kind of, nobody would go out there and say we have a path.
I noticed it on the Harvest Festival, I was out there and it was.
You did notice. Yeah.
Yeah, so Todd brought me out, actually, probably a month ago, and he is actually concerned about the safety as well.
With the metal, yeah, it's, it's, it is an issue for safety and, and also that is our fire escape route and we have, you know, and we have a fire job, he has to maintain that, it's not just for, like, to say we put it there to.
No, the whole reason that the path is there was for accessibility.
Right, and it's not.
Which still boggles my mind that we had to do it for accessibility, but it has stairs, but.
Yes, that is true.
Well, there was no way around it.
No, I recognize that, it's just a very strange.
So what I can tell you, um, the, the good news is, is that because we had to put the stone in, it's very well prepped and a lot of the expense is actually taken out, it's already there. Um, but I will bring back a figure to you, but it's just something for you to, to know.
Gonna be the removal of the metal or?
The metal would come out, yeah. The metal would come out, yeah. It also gets caught up in the mower and, you know, gets pulled out of the ground.
Tires. Yeah, and actually brought, I was out there with the kids a couple of weeks ago too, and just, well, I was like, oh, yeah, I asked the teachers, I'm like, yeah, somebody's gonna break their, their son.
Yes, it's, it's actually, yeah.
Okay. I believe we are on to executive committee and.
Steve left, but I give you.
He's not here.
The minutes were in there too.
The minutes are in there. Um, the big news is that they're coming back for the executive committee. We're coming, we're meeting again tomorrow night for draft two of the budget. The big piece that was talked about in there was, um, the budget was presented at a, as I said earlier, at a one point nine six percent increase. And there, um, was an ask of, you know, it'd just been, we presented this budget right after this student monitoring, so what more, if there were additional resources, what could we impact, uh, to in, to improve student outcomes? So, the leadership team met last week, I believe it was last week, and we did some work on that. Um, and, uh, the real variable is what I said earlier is, um, and, you know, I'm gonna be saying more of this tomorrow night, but, um, we could, you know, we've got some good i, we've got some ideas, but we need to work with our staffs. And I've learned, it's taken me a long time to learn that in Washington Central, you don't lead with the staff cause if you lead with the staff, the board, um, you can't lead with the staff or the board first. You have to lead with them both at the same time. So, if the board asks for ideas, you gotta have time to go develop them with the staff. And if the staff develops ideas and the board still know about it, so you've gotta do that simultaneously. So, in three weeks, we can get some good ideas. We can tell you about approximate costs. And we, we actually developed what we thought we could do within the next year, but we take, I don't wanna roll out specifics. It's about being specific enough, but vague to say, we gotta go work with our colleagues on this.
Can I ask a question about the minutes?
Yeah.
It looked like you did a lot, and it says it lasted half an hour. Is that true?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's a well-run meeting.
Gee.
I saw it start at five thirty-one and into six oh four, and I thought, that might be a typo.
We flew. I needed to be out of there by six fifteen to get to my daughter's concert at seven o'clock in Morrisville. And I was leaving at six fifteen. Matthew helped me.
You need that?
We're thinking about scheduling, uh, a concert for Bill's daughter every time.
I see you.
Can we do that for the full board meeting?
Maybe.
I'm going to go see a concert.
Uh, it's, eh, in, not in an effort to prolong this meeting, but what's the salary analysis for?
So, we had last year proposed that for, we have a lot of non-bargaining positions.
Okay.
And, um, I know enough about some other areas because I used to work in those areas or had other job positions in the supervising that know that our salaries are not necessarily competitive with outside salaries, and we can lose people. We actually know that some of our positions, that you can get paid higher by the state of Vermont. We know some of our other positions, we pay higher than the state of Vermont. But if we're gonna, we wanna retain, the, the biggest gain for human resources is retaining your personnel and growing them. But if you don't pay them appropriately.
Then you can't retain them.
You can't retain them. And so, we have a lot of non-bargaining, actually. Um, we probably have about a quarter of our staff is non-bargaining, maybe not quite that high.
Quarter of the everybody.
Everybody in the SU.
There's three in this building.
No, I'm talking about, no, cause there's, we have ESP.
Oh, ESP.
We have ESP, we have an ESP association, but we have not, we have the non-bargaining as well. So, um, that was, we had set, the board approved for an analysis for that to be done. Um, but we're, uh, we just can't pull together the time from inside to support that analysis to be done. So, there's some other work that we're, that we're trying to do right now.
And when you look at that, you're looking at every part of that salary as far as.
You mean total.
Total cost, total cost, total cost. But I mean, I need, I mean, I need to look at it. I do look when I set a principal salary. Um, I look at across Vermont and within our SU. Um, you know, if we go to one association, I expect there to be an administrators' association pretty quick. Not because they need to do it, it's just, it's what hap, once you get over a bargaining unit of eight, you can have your own association. And that usually happens. So, you better have good metrics for setting all those salaries.
Policy committee?
We haven't met. Um, we couldn't, we couldn't meet when we were scheduled to remember, but we're going to be able to meet the Monday before our carousel meeting. So, we will have met then, so there's nothing to report.
School equality committee?
Eh, we met. It's just that all of the meetings are blurred. We met.
Like, how do you keep track of all of the hats that you wear? It's, it's a lot of hats.
We met this week and, eh, it was, it was actually a great meeting. I actually had, I did underline a couple of things eh, here. Let me open it up, but I keep saying that it's my favorite committee, and it is, we do a lot of work. Besides this meeting, which I love, eh, it's, eh, we do get a lot of, eh, work.
It's forward-looking work.
Eh, yeah, it's forward-looking, and it's the work that we wanna be involved with. It's more, it's closer to the kids. I don't know how to explain it. So, we talked about eh, how grateful we were for the monitor report, that eh, that, that the teacher, similar conversations that we had our, in the small, in the, in the small groups. And then eh, Carrie's, we're gonna try to have something for December fifth, and Carrie just sent something out for us to, to review and, you know, to really think about what, what we want eh, next. And let me just open the monitoring. Turn it to, oh, I see it. A minute. There it is. Eh, so what the goal, so he just sent eh, a goal. I haven't gone through it, so it'd be preliminary to try to say something. He wants input from all of us, and we are gonna present something on December, on December fifth to all the boards. And what, what is that gonna look like? I, I do not, I do not know yet. Yes, ma'am?
I mean, there were three or four specific things that came up at the meeting, but I don't know where the committee is going with those things.
Yeah, so what, what he did is just, he sent us some eh, options, and we're sending him input on, on the three specific. So, it'd be preliminary, I think, to tell you what we're doing and not be what you're thinking. But basically, it's how we get better at, at monitoring. There were a lot of great con- conversations of exactly what we just shared out. Are we, is there anything that we're missing in this, eh, in this picture? You know, the, how can we bring in, and Bill talked about this, how can we bring the, eh, the, the survey that we do for every school, the, forgetting the name of it, yeah.
Climate.
Climate survey. So, there were some conversations around that, but really, right now, it's like, what are we gonna do about math and literacy, right? We've all been talking about what are our, our, our goals. So, there were a lot of conversations around, around that, and we were pretty quick to, it was a short, which, eh, it was the, it was the longest of the ones that we had, but it's, it's a, it was a short planning meeting on what to do on December fifth. And I'm gonna just see what it says here. Carrie. One minute. So, about too many windows open, and it's getting really slow, this old computer. It's not coming. Sorry about that. I can't bring it up, but eh, you know, you will get it on December, on December fifth. I can't get it to, I'm putting on my actual email. And. Let me see. Nope. I can't pull it up, sorry.
That's all right. I think I'm gonna move us to negotiations.
Steve's on that for you, but, um, issues have been exchanged between the associate, Teachers Association and the boards. And, uh, the first negotiation meeting is Monday, the twenty-sixth. So, IBB training's happened for everybody, and we're getting going. And we have a temporary MO, a tentative agreement on MOU for the rest of the healthcare administration, HRA administration from January to June thirtieth. So, that was done as well. Some good work.
I think that brings us to the board order. Close to our last thing in business.
She sent it today.
Yeah, Carla sends them to you, just so you see them.
I would take a motion for the board order. Lindy has, it's forty-one thousand eight sixty-eight, uh, thirty-one. Correct.
Do you need a second?
I would take a motion.
Oh, um, make a motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I usually don't make motions as the chair. Um, so, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion of the board order as presented? And if, yes?
Yes.
Seeing and unhearing, though, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Sorry, I was starting to find the thing. I found it.
Oh, you found it, okay.
I found it, so.
Move back to school quality for a second.
Move back to school eh, quality. So, the fourth thing, so first, that the committee appreciates several eh, eh, aspects of, of the goal that is highly relevant to all our students, that is based on objective evidence, and it sets specific targets and defines timeframe, and, and that is ambitious. So, that's what we appreciated of the monitoring report. But we also, eh, what we are asking is to adopt a set of math learning goals, which you guys already kind of did with the percentages, but we, one, I request comparable goals for literacy for the current year too. And as for a reflection by teachers and administrators, and individually and collectively after the year-end of the goal-setting process and actual student learning. Eh, and from this, we will, you know, this is act, like, a big goal. From this, we would like to create a multi-year, eh, significant improvement for both literacy and math. So, that's sort of the bigger, so we're gonna, you know, this is like a little letter. I'm just reading you a snippet of it. And we're giving Carrie input on that from our meeting.
Great. Um, so, I, um, need to move us into executive session for a minute. Um, we are, we don't have any action to take once we come out. So, um, the only piece of update that you need is for time we came out.
Do.